Everybody silence your cell phones please. Alright, let's call this meeting to order at six AM. Can I get a roll call?
Alderman Green, Alderman Revertis.
Here.
Alderman Welch.
Here.
Alderman Madre.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Alright, let's do the pipe. Alderman Jones, would you like us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state of God, one and indivisible.
Alright, we also, at this time, we have a special presentation from TIPS, the interlocal purchasing system, and I believe Lindsay Brief is here? How was my pronunciation?
That was perfect.
To the public, please.
Thank y'all for having me. Um, I had a meeting here, I don't know, a couple months ago. Um, we are a national purchasing cooperative. First of all, my name is Lindsay Brief. I'm the program manager for y'all's area. I cover Houston, Austin, Beaumont, Huntsville. Um, but we are a national purchasing cooperative. Um, we exist so that y'all don't have to go out to bid. Um, basically, we have over three thousand vendors and counting under contract. So, we put out bids as an organization. We are a public agency. We put out a bid or various bids in over a hundred categories, and vendors respond in anything you can think of. So, anything that y'all need to purchase, we have a contract for that. Um, and that allows you to not have to go out and put out your own bid for the city. You can piggyback on our contracts because we've already met all the legal procurement process for you. Um, so, we, we have over ten thousand members, public agencies under contract, or that are members of us, so that would be you. Membership for y'all would be free. Um, it does not cost you anything to use any of our contracts. It's just a way for y'all to save time and money. So, vendors, when they respond to our bids, they off, usually offer a discounted price. So, if you ever needed a roofer, or if you needed a contractor to come out and do city, you know, public work, um, we have all that for you. We actually have a construction team as well. Um, so, any type of construction contracts that y'all would be interested, we can provide those. But we also do a whole host of other things like furniture, technology, really anything you can think of that the city might need to purchase, we have a contract and a vendor for you. And that's multiple vendors. Um, typically, all of our categories involve multiple vendors, so it allows you to get those three bids, so you don't have to worry about just getting the low bid. Um, we sell best value, so we want you to make sure that you're getting a vetted vendor, um, that can do a good job for y'all's city, um, and y'all won't have to worry about that in case you are audited someday in the future. Um, so, we, um, we're one of the top purchasing cooperatives out there. Um, I will tell y'all that Galveston ISD, um, the state of Galveston, um, Galveston County, pretty much everybody around here, city of Hitchcock, all of them are all members with us. Um, they all use our contracts. So, if you wanted to reach out to any of them to get their recommendations on using a co-op or using TIPS in general, um, that may be great, um, for y'all just to get a little bit more knowledge outside of me. Um, but you're welcome to reach out to me. We can schedule additional calls. I can come back. Um, I just live in the woodlands. Um, so, I'm, I'm here to help y'all. Um, it's just sort of an easier avenue for y'all to purchase. Um, and, and it's been very successful for our agencies. Um, another great thing about TIPS is, is we have a rebate program. So, for all of our Texas members, obviously, that includes y'all, um, we give money back to our cities and our counties and our school districts and our higher education entities, um, for when they use us. So, the more you use us, the bigger your checks will be. Um, and, and we don't cut checks lower than a hundred dollars, so not everybody's gonna get a check. Um, but I do give a lot of money back. I have over five hundred, um, agencies in my territorial land that I support. So, and if y'all were to join with TIPS and become a member, um, it would be good for the life of the entity. Obviously, the city of Jacob, Jacob each isn't going anywhere, um, so y'all wouldn't have to worry about doing any more paperwork. But it's just an interlocal agreement and then a city council resolution to join, and that's it. And then you can start saving money and saving time and, um, working with me. I can help you find vendors that you need. Um, we can also work with vendors that are not on a co-op and that are interested in, um, getting on a co-op and, and working through the process to see if they can get their own contract, um, so that then y'all can use them through our cooperative, so. I know that was a lot of information, but, um, have any of y'all worked with a co-op before? You have? Good.
Yeah, I've tried.
Yeah. So, it's, they're really popular. Um, I, but I really, I encourage you to reach out to your, you know, your friends that are at the other cities or even the school district or county and ask them about our program because they, they've loved it, so we save them a lot of money. And in fact, Galveston County did their electricity through us, so we also do that. We also have three electricity providers. I, I think y'all are regulated or don't. So, that wouldn't apply, but there's plenty of other options for you, so.
We mind them how much it costs?
Yes, it's free. And we might give you money back, so, um, yeah.
Okay, now, in layman's terms, so everybody can understand, you're the Robert Revert. Could you explain our current process, how we have to advertise and go out for RFPs and the time that takes?
We advertise over the weekend for trash pickup. And it, it, we have to pay to have in the newspaper. Have it well for so many days. Uh, then we, tomorrow, Thursday, we have a pre-conference. Uh, I mean, not pre-conference, but a question and answer thing where any of the vendors will come ask questions. So, it's a process that takes a lot of time, a lot of my time. Not that I say it, I don't appreciate the job, okay? But no, it, it would save a lot of time on staff.
Yeah, it, it really helps y'all because when you put out your own bid on the street, you're gonna get a ton of different options that are gonna come to you and say that they can do the job. But they may not be qualified to do the job, and you might hire them because they might have the lowest price or you think they're great, but then you might have problems down the road, and then what do you do? Then your back is for one. So, I can't, can't guarantee that, like, we have the best vendors in the world, but I think we do a really good job of vetting them. They, not everybody gets a contract. They go through a bid process. It's a national posting bid. Um, so, they are fully vetted, and I can guarantee you that they will do a good job under contract. And if they won't, then we don't stand for that. So, we are a public agency too. We have to protect our members, y'all. Um, and we don't want a vendor under contract that's not gonna do a good job for y'all. So, just know that all of our construction vendors, depending on what category and contract they hold, they're all bonded and insured and they have references and, you know, I just want y'all to feel comfortable using our contracts and wear the new thing. Um, but any of the other categories, you know, like I said, we, we have contracts for you. We do automobiles, we do buses. I mean, really, anything you can think of. HVAC, energy savings performance contracting, plumbing, electrical, I mean, we have it all. So, um, and, and like I said, I can help y'all navigate those waters, you know, and, and find the best vendors for you. I can give y'all options, teach y'all how to use our website or whoever's gonna be doing that.
Will this also expedite our timeline?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, you can pick a vendor on our website and call them and get a quote probably within a day or two. And then, or if you wanted three, if y'all wanted three options, you know, to look at the best option out of three, we could also do that.
And I believe our current process takes months?
Almost two months.
Councils, you have questions? Alderman Jones?
No questions.
Alderman, please?
I don't have any questions.
Well, no, this time. A couple of questions were brought up when this was, um, discussed earlier.
Okay.
Um, one was nothing's free. You, you said that several times earlier.
Yes.
So, no, no hidden costs, no hidden contracts?
No hidden costs, no hidden contracts.
Okay.
I mean, you're, the city's required to pay for whatever you're purchasing, of course. By not offering free red paper. Furniture, I mean, that would be amazing. Um, but yes, from us, no. No, sir.
Okay, another comment that was mentioned is that we're too small.
Absolutely not. I have giant cities and I have tiny school districts and tiny cities. It doesn't matter. Y'all all have needs. You're a city. You all have needs. You have people. You have things you need to purchase. It does not matter.
I believe in the last three years, we're close to three million dollars in infrastructure upgrades, repairs, maintenance?
Yeah. And we could save you even more money than that because movement, like I said, majority of our vendors, when they respond to the RFPs, they give you a discounted price. So, you're gonna save money on the front end, but then you also may get money back at the end of the year as a rebate.
Do you have a contract of sorts that you could provide for us that council could agree to?
Do. I got it. I gave it to. I can also send it to you electronically, and it's on our website too. Um, it's just an interlocal agreement, um, which is by Texas law, it's just an agreement between TIPS Purchasing Cooperative and you as a city. Um, and then it's also, we, we provide a city council resolution if y'all require one, which I assume that you do. That's why I'm here. So, it does say board resolution, but you're, feel free to alter it however you choose, but I can send them to, to any of the buddies that need it.
Anything else?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank y'all for having me.
Thank you.
I do love y'all's speech, by the way. Y'all have a good night. Thank you.
I understand your fact.
Thank you.
That's one of the three. I don't believe we're having a public hearing today. Forgot the.
Swearing the officers.
Oh, thank you. Well, at this time, I tell you what, let's swear in the officers. Chief?
Council, we have, uh, two new members of our department that we're swearing in tonight. I need to call Hector Garcia and Thomas Everett up, please. Per, per my Facebook lady over here, we're gonna stand in this.
Thank you.
She gave me an order, we're gonna follow that one. First, let me introduce you guys to Hector Garcia. Hector Garcia was born in San Antonio, Texas. He started his law enforcement career in nineteen ninety-three with the Barrett County Sheriff's Department. Hector has served his community for more than thirty years and holds the highest level as a Masterpiece Officer, numerous certifications, twelve of those years as a supervisor with increasing levels of responsibility. In two thousand and six, he was promoted to Sergeant with the Travis County Attorney's Office, District Attorney's Office, and was assigned as the lead criminal investigator of the Family Violence Division, felony court. Throughout his career, he has enjoyed patrol, vice, gang unit, narcotic SWAT, major crimes investigations, training, and mentoring officers, sergeants, lieutenants, and higher ranks. Hector is married to his beautiful soulmate, Sandra Garcia, fifteen years, and they have six kids together. Hector enjoys traveling, golf, fishing, cooking, and entertaining family, friends at home. He also, which I know this because we compete against each other, he coached softball for many years, twenty-one years to be exact. That's Hector Garcia. Our second candidate here is Thomas Everett, was born and raised in Jacksonville, Florida. After graduating from high school, he served our country by enlistment in the United States Air Force. Tom began his law enforcement career after his time in the Air Force and has over fifteen years of experience. Tom also holds a Masterpiece Officer certification and has several T-CO certifications, including Taser Instructor K-9, DWI certified, and advanced open water scuba diver. Tom has, uh, it's Tom, some of you know, Tom is actually our part-time code enforcement officer. So, if you've got a ticket problem, don't be mad. Tom is engaged to his beautiful fiancee Cheryl and has two wonderful children. His hobbies include scuba diving, boxing, guns, and watching our Houston transcripts. With that being said, let's get down to business. Gentlemen, please raise your hand. Aye.
Hector Garcia.
Tom Everett.
Do something we swear.
Do something we swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office of Jamaica Beach Police Officer.
Of the all length Jamaica Beach Police Officer.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
In will to the best.
In will to the best.
Of my ability.
Of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The constitutional laws.
The constitutional laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the band. You get a free Coke today. No charge. Tom was smart. Tom wore the uniform, so he doesn't have to get bugged. He knew it was coming.
Ouch.
Yeah, he's bleeding.
When you get through the right.
Congratulations. This one, then, we get a chance, just to mention, don't forget about the Memorial Day Bash. Marcy and Ashley have been doing an outstanding job, keep staying with us on Facebook. They keep adding more and more things to the agenda, so, uh, someone came to meet with me, uh, what was the gentleman's name?
Claudia Penney.
And he said, hey, you know, you have a new chief, yeah, he's, man, we need to bring that Memorial Day Bash back. I said, let's do it. So, thank y'all very much for taking the bull by the horns. So, we look forward to seeing y'all there on the twenty-seventh, five to nine. Thank you.
Okay, now, at this time, I'd like to introduce one of our new city staff members, Esther Abadigo. How did it go?
So, I have taken over the water for our mits. Um, I've, I've had, like, wonderful welcome from everybody. I really enjoy it so far. Uh, it's gonna be lots to learn, but I think it'll work out.
Short and sweet, that's how.
Efficient.
Okay, I've already been over this. Um, is Branch here to give a report or are we gonna do that later?
They are not here to do that.
Okay. Citizens who request to speak? Ms. Marcy Kurt, would you like to talk about, what about the Memorial Day dance?
Marcy Kurt, talk nine one six six one five hundred Morgan. Um, so, chief's covered most of it. Uh, they, there are links for people to sign up on the Facebook, on the city page. And so, I need people to set up chairs and tables, clean up chairs and tables, don't just ditch us. And, um, the cornhole tournament, so that's the most important thing. We have a local truck coming, so there'll be some grub to, um, have its view of YOP. Uh, some great tattoos, we have decorations, we have, like, food DJ. We'll have a good time. So, five to nine, twenty-seventh, at the park. Spread the word, and also, everybody's playing cornhole, right? Just two people per team.
Tattoos and alcohol. Moving on, reports from directors, police and fire. Um, Chief Garibay, he attached his report. Director of Operations, Robert, do you want to comment on it or are you just going with the packet?
I could comment, uh, but I just want to point out that on the, on June seventeenth, there will be a hurricane preparedness meeting here downstairs. Uh, at ten AM on Saturday, January, I mean, June seventeen, uh, the whole city's welcome to be there in attendance. That's what I definitely want to point out.
Just comfortably.
Yeah, we will have hot dogs.
From the fire chief, um, Georgia, the city secretary interim, on you.
I don't have anything. I think all of us covered everything. I don't have anything to talk about, so we'll be redundant.
Okay, nothing new, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, comments, reports from county members. Um, Alderman Green?
I have nothing.
Alderman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Revertis. Um, the Wiki Poll meeting will be next Saturday, nine AM at the Galveston Country Club. And, uh, I wanted to show you all the hard work that our poll workers did. Thank you, Ginger and, um, Jerry, the four of them. They, um, put together six hundred stars for us, so I sure appreciate all their hard work. Um, as of today, um, we have shared over forty-six hundred stars. Today is National Peace Officers Memorial Day. In nineteen sixty-two, President John F. Kennedy issued the first proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Peace Week to remember and honor law enforcement officers for their service and sacrifices. And this is a token of appreciation from our city that you, any one of you, can come to City Hall or come to me, and you can also share, share the stars and fruits. Um, I want to mention the last election, Gil. You may have been last on the ballot, but you came in first place. And I want to congratulate you on getting the most votes in Jamaica Beach history for the seat of Alderman.
Wow.
You worked hard and you earned. You worked hard and earned every one of those two hundred and seventeen votes. Mayor LeFauer, congratulations on your election. You also broke the record for getting the most votes in history for Jamaica Beach for the same city, uh, for the seat of mayor with two hundred and forty-five votes. I look forward to working with both of you. Over fifty percent of Jamaica Beach registered voters showed up at the polls with this last elec, the last election. This is nearly a miracle. Thank you.
Alderman Montre?
I don't really have anything to report, but I thank you for the compliment. Mostly, y'all, I, I, I thank the citizens of Jamaica Beach for voting for me. I'll do my best to maintain your trust, because that's what it's all about. Thank you.
One more time, in case you haven't heard, we are having Memorial Day. Really would love to see all my friends and neighbors there. It's for a good cause and for good people. Thank you, everybody, for coming out, full house. This last couple of months has been special, to say the least. I want to send out a special thank you to all the citizens and friends that have reached out to me with support and appreciation. It meant the world to me. Sometimes it's just nice to hear. Every once in a while, it's good to get the pat on the back, and I really appreciate it, folks. All right, um, adding to Alderman Jones's comment, how about that election turnout? Over four hundred voters. You said it's over fifty percent of our population? I got a third of our population.
Of the registered voters. We have eight hundred and eight registered voters. And we have, um, four hundred and sixteen, actually, four hundred and eighteen voted that day.
Thank you. Um, eight and sixty brand-new regist, registered voters. Just, uh, two years ago, we only had a showing of two hundred and eighty-five. So, um, now that's a showing. Congratulations to the plumbers and the new mayor. Okay, here recently, you should have received the mailouts from the Jamaica Beach Volunteer Fire Department fundraiser. This will be for the annual Fourth of July dance. I'd like to remind everybody that our volunteer fire department is a hundred percent funded on private donations. Please give what you can. If you didn't receive a mailout, you can go onto their website and donate there. I want to say their, I don't have the exact date, but it's that Saturday, right around the fourth, and that'll be their annual dance, music, food. Hey, it's National Police Week. Please tell our men in blue a big hug and thank you and show us support. I don't see any of them right now, but I'd also like to say congratulations to Lieutenant Mark Posey. Um, he was just named of being Jamaica Beach's fifty club Officer of the Year. Quite proud of him. All right, this is some great news. We have a new court clerk, Jennifer Morris. She's one of our own locals, born and raised here. I don't know if you guys recall, but we've been having problems getting, what would the term be? Getting our revenue in from our tickets, our court costs and what have you. Check out these stats. This is exciting. For the month of April, oh, and this does not include checks, money orders or cash, a hundred and forty payments totaling over thirty-two thousand dollars. That's in one month. So far to date this month, over sixteen thousand dollars. That's great. We, we've never received monies like that coming in, so we're making leaps and strides there. Now, even though, uh, Georgia didn't have anything to say with her report, it's with quite displeasure and sadness that our current city secretary interim has turned in her resignation, and I believe June first is gonna be it for you. So, I want to thank you for your seven-plus years of service. Okay, I think I was long-winded enough. All right. Constant agenda and approval of minutes. Approval of minutes from the regular city council meeting dated three, twenty, twenty-three. I believe all of you guys, um, received this in your packet, it was the email ticket. Is there any discussion? No? If not, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve minutes from the regular city council meeting, three.
I second.
Twenty-three.
All right, all those in favor? All right, new business. Consider and take action on resolution number two zero, two three dash zero seven. Camison the votes of the municipal author's election held on Saturday, May sixth, twenty twenty-three. Do we have any discussions? Okay, well, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion that we, um, well, yes, on my, on canvassing the election.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Any answers? All right, new business, item number two. Service recognition, Mayor Clay Morris, whose term of office has expired. Robert, wait, you put this on the agenda?
I do, sir. I, we like to, the staff would like to thank, uh, Mayor Morris for his two years he served on the city council in two term, uh, one term as mayor. We, uh, we, we really enjoyed working with him, but we look forward to working with Mayor Bauer as she takes office today.
All right, I would also like to comment that it was a pleasure and an honor to serve with Mayor Clay Morris, and I am pleased and proud of what we've gotten done the last two years and, uh, really looking forward to keeping that momentum going. Clay couldn't be with us tonight. He had another activity, but next time we see him, how we give him a pat on the back in a thank you. All right. Would somebody please get Mr. Pat Monks, our judge, and we're gonna move into the administration of office. New elected officials, Mayor Sherri Bauer, Alderman Montre, and Alderman.
Good evening. I think we'll do this one anytime. I'm, I'm the judge and presi, presiding judge of Jamaica Beach, Gerald Monks. And at this time, I have the privilege to swear in our new mayor. If all after me, I, Sharon Bauer.
I, Sharon Bauer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of mayor.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of office of mayor.
For the city of Jamaica Beach.
For the city of Jamaica Beach.
Galveston County.
Galveston, yeah.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And I will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect.
And I will do the best of my ability to preserve and protect.
And defend the constitution and the laws of the United States and this state, so help me God.
And defend.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Alderman.
Of the office of Alderman.
For the city of Jamaica Beach.
For the city of Jamaica Beach.
Galveston County.
Galveston County.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
I will, to the best of my ability, preserve.
I will, to the best of my ability, preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution and the laws of the US, of the United States.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, Georgia. That it? After me, I Lorraine Taz Jones.
I Lorraine Taz Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Alderman.
Of the office of Alderman.
For the city of Jamaica Beach.
For the city of Jamaica Beach.
Galveston County.
Galveston County.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
I will, to the best of my ability, preserve.
I will, to the best of my ability, preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution of the laws of the US, of the United States.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Give us just a second, will you? Next on the agenda, Mr. Gil? Yeah, can we come down and swear you in again? I'll break it up a little bit better. Where's our video camera? Yes, sir. Follow with me. I Gilbert Madre.
I Gilbert Madre.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Alderman.
Of the office of Alderman.
For the city of Jamaica Beach.
For the city of Jamaica Beach.
Galveston County.
Galveston County.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability.
And will do the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna get all you folks to look here real quick, nice and pretty. There we go. One, two, and three.
Okay, well, I think the next thing on the agenda is the mayor's report. So first of all, I'd like to thank every one of you here, and I'd like to thank the citizens of Jamaica Beach for their vote and for their trust in voting me in to lead the city. Moving forward, as Russell indicated, you know, there have been some good things going on in this city, and one of the things I will dedicate myself to, and I know every member up here well, is that we will all show respect for each other, we'll pull together to keep great things going. So, and a little bit about my priorities for the next three weeks. We're intending to have another meeting here, hopefully in three weeks, but as Russell indicated, Georgia's leaving, so we've had some staffing transition over the last few weeks, so clearly getting staffing, getting the transition going, figuring out the priorities for the next few weeks as far as, you know, that emergency management training class going on, and there's a lot of critical things coming up with hurricane season, so getting that going, getting training of our new employees and cross-training, and everybody's gonna have to be all hands on deck to get everybody up to speed. I will ask for a little bit of patience from the citizens when you call up here. It might take them a little bit longer than in the past to get you an answer, but I know Esther and Jennifer and Jessica are all doing triple time, and, you know, Robert's our old timer now. So he'll be hustling too. Working on our budget, finding out exactly where we're at and how we're impacted from some of the costs from our water line repairs, so that we can look at exactly what we need to move forward. Our budget process is kicking off, we have to, we have to have those ready to go and have to be approved by October first. So getting that full budget worked out, I know we've got some meetings already scheduled with the engineering company to look at how we expedite some of our water line repairs. We're gonna be reviewing our water rates and sewer rates. As Robert mentioned, we have gone out for RFPs for the trash pickup, so pulling all that together to look at our water bills and where we're gonna, we'll have a presentation for that for the next meeting, which shows what we spend, what it costs us for our water, and how all those rates roll up. Planning early on in June to have a goal-setting town hall meeting, looking at locations where we can do that, where maybe it's air-conditioned instead of downstairs in the fire hall, but hoping that citizens will partake of that, and we can, we can wrap up our whole strategy and vision and then use that for our one-year plan and a five-year plan and looking out to the future. Y'all should have all gotten a Blackboard communication. The girls have been working really hard, staff's been working really hard on getting all of that information updated. We're gonna be making a push-out to citizens to get your information updated, a lot of it's out of date, and that is our primary immediate tool to communicate with you, so with our water outage, we can use Blackboard. So we are gonna be, like I said, be making a push to get that updated. And then, of course, the other project we've talked about all the time is our water pipeline replacement plan. So what are we gonna do? How are we gonna be able to expedite it to reduce the number of repairs we have to do? And then also, we're gonna be working on the website, just getting it refreshed and updated, and a more efficient communication tool. So, and then after that, we'll get to work on policies and procedures and sewer plant repairs and maintenance and all of the issues we have going forward. But we're gonna build a great new team, and we're gonna be ready to move into the future. A few other notes, Georgia has the pool operating in great shape. They are doing a final drain and clean on it right now, but all the lifeguards have been hired and trained, and we're ready for a great opening on May twenty-seventh at ten AM, and that'll correspond with our, here again, the park event that evening, we'll be ready to go. And also, we'll be posting it on the website and out in whatever other forms of communication we can. We do have an opening on the Planning and Zoning Commission, so one of our members has needed to resign. Oh, had they moved. So, so please ask yourselves, ask your neighbors if you'd like to serve on that board. Like I said, we are gonna post it, and I might be knocking on a few doors to encourage a few people to post for it. And then, yeah, I am planning on going to two council meetings a month, we've talked to staff about that, so we'll be keeping you posted on the website, Facebook page, as well as Blackboard, on what those dates and timings are gonna be. So I'll be starting to post more on the Mayor's Corner, that's on the website, so if you go up there and click, it's kind of a little button down on the left-hand side, I'll be putting a lot of information out there. And my web, my new email address, which I just got hooked up and running today, it is sharonbauer@jamaicabeachtx.gov, so you guys reach out to me all the time, as well as for your city council members. Anyway, also, there was a mention on one of the Facebook posts about the type of herbicide we're using to do our ditch cleanups and the main ditch drainage areas in the city. And so David Torres, who's been doing that for us, he did confirm with me that that is a fish-safe herbicide we're using. It's not Roundup, so it is, it is water-safe, so I wanted to pass that along. And then finally, you know, I just want to let y'all know how honored I am that I'll be able to serve this community, and I'm looking forward to rolling up my sleeves to make what we need to have happen happen. Please reach out to me with your ideas, your suggestions, your concerns, and hopefully your willingness to volunteer. And that's all I have. Do we have a motion for a Joe?
Take the motion, I will adjourn.
Okay. And I think there's cake.